Are we ready? Okay, I'm gonna move the microphone. I heard, they can't hear me. I guess I'm blind now. Okay. We also, gentlemen.
Yep.
Gee.
Yes, sir.
Well, open the meeting for Thursday, April 6th, 2017. Please stand and say the pledge allegiance to the flag. All together, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which you stand, one nation, undivisible, liberty and justice for all. I hope that's not, I hope that-
That's for you.
I hope that's not Trump bombing Syria. That's all we need. Okay, opening comments. Vice Chairman Enzo first.
Okay. Last night, my wife Peggy and I, the town clerk and I, and Jeff attended the Essex Heritage Award Ceremony for the NPT. And they were recognized at that, at that meeting. Secretary Kerry was there. I didn't get to meet him, but the town clerk did. So, and she was very excited about it. So, I just wanna say that they did a great job. The Essex, PBD Essex Museum, people should really take that in, it's a great place. And, you know, it was a wonderful time. The NPT deserves a lot of credit for what they do. And we have a note. I just wanna let everybody know that our former librarian, Dan DiStefano, passed away this morning. Dan was, was very instrumental in the town. He ran the library, he brought this into the 21st century. Great guy. And he'll be sorely missed.
Very good. Any else?
That's it.
Any else?
No, that's it.
Gee?
Last meeting, hey, it works. Last meeting, I had a few of my constituents tell me that they couldn't hear me. Obviously, the mic was too far away. And I did, talked a lot about, we had an open meeting on March 9th downstairs with the bylaw committee that the three of us have appointed. And lawyers for us, the town council, the town administrator, the committee, and we hashed out the fact that the Town Administrator Act does not really jive with what we have for, what was that? Town charter, sorry. The town charter and the Town Administrator Act don't jive. We need a special committee to find out ways to make them jive, to make them look the same. And whether the changes come to the Town Administrator Act or not is the charge of this bylaw committee. To review the town charter and Special Act of 92 and resolve issues that are caused by inconsistencies in the two documents, to flush out areas in both documents to define duties between selectmen and town administrator. It was decided that the bylaw committee resolve issues in an objective manner, and if they are unable, then the direction is to make changes in the Town Administrator Act. And the bylaw committee be added to the continuation article on a warrant at town meeting, and then the committee would be called the Charter and Bylaw Committee. So I just wanted to report that, that we are making progress. And it was a great meeting. It went real well. Secondly, we went down to the golf course last week?
Tuesday?
Tuesday. Forget the days. I had a long week myself, it was quite nice. And we had a tour of the golf course. The selectmen were invited along with the golf course committee. And it was well done. The place was really well done. And the town administrator came out with the perfect statement, what a great asset this is. They've done a great job down there. And I promised them that I would use this word. It was spectacular. It was really well done. So, that's all for me, Mr. Chairman, but that was really well done. And I'm really sorry about Dan DiStefano.
Yeah, Dan was a great, great librarian, a great guy. And he did a lot for the town, and he volunteered for so many different projects. He was very good. Well, I didn't go to Heritage Park, but I did go attend the Lions Club Italian Night last night, the Knights of Columbus. And I must tell ya, what a treat. I've been going for the last few years, and it's, they do an excellent job, and it's a great homemade food, and they, they really, and they raised a lot of money. And if, next year, if you have a chance to attend, the Lions, under KK Sherber, she was the one that really, she got a lot of excitement and brought a lot of initiatives to the Lot Net Lions, the Hot Lions, and they're doing a good job. And that dinner last night was outstanding. I wanna congratulate the Public Works Department for outstanding work last night, working right through to fix the sewer break, because we had the inspection of the Kelli Greens, and it's coming along fantastically, and they've done a great job. Of course, lo and behold, we had a major sewer break last night, yesterday morning. Our building inspector, Wayne Wilson, was opening the Kelli Greens for the workers to get in there, and he found the water leaking in there. Of course, he advised everyone, and then we turned loose. Dennis Ball did a great job with his team, brought in Grenice, who usually does our sewer and water work, and they, boy, they come right across the carsway, and they fixed it. And we're not back to normal, but we're almost there. And they're pumping down the golf course. As you know, we've got about two and a half inches of water already. As you can hear, the lightning and thunder and rain out there, so we'll probably get another inch tonight, inch and a half, but they're pumping it down. And they've got high-speed pumps down there, so by the weekend, it should be, because lo and behold, we're going from winter, no spring, right to summer next week. Okay. So that was, I just wanna tell you, especially the Lions, the Lions, if you have a chance, take that dinner in next year, it's quite a treat. Gentlemen, I want to stand a motion to approve the prior minutes on March 9th and March 16th. Motion, is there a motion?
Yeah. Okay, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the executive session minutes of 3:917, which I have right here, and the minutes of 3:16, public minutes of 3:1617.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Motion's been made, and second it, is there discussion?
If I may?
Yes.
I came here ready to not approve the minutes of 3:19 until I realized no one could hear me. So obviously, they aren't in the minutes if no one can hear me. So I will approve these, but I would like what I just mentioned about the bylaw committee in the next set of minutes, please. So-
I was on the same, they couldn't hear me either, which-
But that's impossible. You have a very deep voice, Mr. Lumber.
Wow.
I was the only one that could hear.
Really?
I know, Enzo was the only one that could hear.
God, you're throwing the zings at me left and right tonight. Oh, you guys, oh my goodness. Anyways, motion's been made, motion's been seconded, further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Before I begin in the Citizens Forum, I'm gonna take a step, and I invited the lobsterman, Representative Lobsterman, here tonight. And we're down discussing the WAF problem. As you well know, we contracted to get the town WAF, town float, not float, town-
Boat ramp.
Slip.
Slip, the boat, the boat ramp completed, and the contractor came up, shot on this whole procedure, and he didn't get the product that he needed on it in time. So, we were gonna have a meeting with everyone involved, Board of Selectmen, Lobsterman, recreational voters. But I wanna cancel that meeting, and I'm gonna tell, it's up to the board. I'll entertain a motion that I found that the Lobsterman had a great suggestion. Well, once they put the boats in by May 15th, all boats have to be off the WAF for the Memorial Day Parade anyways. Hopefully, the contractor can finish the job and do the slip during the months of May and June, with the deadline of July 1st. And that'll be much better than we're waiting till October, November, December, or cold weather, the cold water, et cetera, et cetera. And they had a, they had some ideas. So I'm gonna entertain a motion to do that, but before I do that, I wanna make sure in the motion, we take care of some other things. They also had some suggestions that the lobster, the swimming in that area be closed while they're in the process of doing the slip. And the other suggestion was that they can use the wall and the pier. We can't have anyone swimming down there. As you all know, the weather's gonna turn next week. Hopefully, it'll be 80, 70, 80, so it'll be, it's about time. But we wanna get this slip done, complete it, and then have it back to normal, and then they can use it. We can notify the Waffenger and Tibbo, Mr. Tibbo, and anyone else. And the other suggestion, there was another suggestion you had, too. We'll have the police chief, while they're down there working, Jeff, have the police chief assigned, you know, police officers to check that more, more frequently-
Okay.
-so that we don't have any problems down there. Because the Lobsterman will have their equipment, their prams with the engines on it, ready to go, and they can, you know, they can just use it. We don't wanna take advantage of them. That's my, I'll entertain a motion to do that, but I just wanna, that's up to you. I was down there talking to them, and they're here, and maybe you would like to get up and say something before the board-
Everything you said this long about sounds real good to us. We appreciate it. We appreciate it.
We're worried about it nighttime.
Yeah, just at nighttime. Things, we don't want things to go missing if we're not able to pull the skips up on the slipway and stuff like that. But other than that, you know, you pretty much covered everything.
Mine? Although, you need to get it to the microphone.
They'll fence, they'll fence in that, that whole area, I'm assuming-
He will.
-where the sheathing is and all their equipment.
Yeah, he has to de-water it.
Yes, but I would still like to see more police in the area more often.
Oh, yeah.
Because we can't have the fishing, you know, that they, you know, normally do, and the swimming, swimming especially, because someone's gonna get hurt, they'll get hurt.
I'm sure Chief Dwyer will okay that.
Well, I wouldn't mind the contractor paying for detail. You know, sit down there and-
Yeah.
And I would light up the area like a Christmas tree down there. You know, bring in some Renault lights and light it up at night so that everyone realizes, you know, the Lobsterman's gonna have their engines on their boats and things.
Can we set up a meeting with the fishermen and the, and us and the contractor?
Sure.
Well, okay, I-
I mean, if we pass- Another day, just to, just to, 'cause I'd like to see them on the same page as those guys, too, you know?
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
And us.
Once we rail this out, and Jeff types it all up, we're gonna approve it right now, the changes, the change of the work orders. And we'll have these in written form for the contractor, that, you know. And I would also add, I would also add, I wouldn't pay the contractor till he completely finishes.
Right.
I wouldn't pay him a dime, and I would, especially the consultants. I wouldn't, I know, I know, I just, I put this in the motion when we make the motion, because, I'll be honest with you, this is, you know, this is supposed to be done. And as I said, in good faith, we trusted them to do that, and they kinda misused our trust. And I don't appreciate that.
I'm still a little-
When they say a, and they're doing C and D instead.
I'm still a little skeptical myself, but-
Okay, yeah. Is there anything else you wanna add, gentlemen? I'll entertain that motion, or if you wanna discuss it further.
So I'll move, and I'll, I'll-
I move that, I'll give it a try.
Go ahead, yeah.
I'll move that the construction begins May 15th until ending, hopefully by July, on the slip, and that the area be closed to swimming, that the fishermen be allowed to use the wall and pier for their jobs, and that hopefully that the police chief, and that the police chief will check the area more often to keep kids out in the way.
Okay.
And that the construction company get paid at the end, is that what you would like?
I would like to make sure they completely, complete the job.
That they complete the job.
And then have, have a-
Detail officer.
A detail officer assigned while the construction, at night, they're gonna be down there during the day, but maybe a cruiser sit down there, just to, and I would light it up, rent, you know, these temporary lights they use down at the sewer break. Light it all up so that people, you know, know to stay away.
I saw move that.
Has been made, is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion, and just one last thing, the, I still like to meet with them, make sure, and I'd like, has the bonding company been notified at all?
They have.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that they're aware of what's going on.
Yeah.
Because we do wanna get it done.
Any, any other further discussion?
Is that satisfactory to you, you guys?
Great, appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
I wanna thank you for stepping up and discussing with the board your concern, because the only way we know that there's a problem, a potential problem down there, if someone doesn't say something to us. And this is, this is, this is great, that you stepped up and you talked, and talked to the board, and, and we appreciate that.
And that the problem's been worked out. That's terrific. That's terrific.
We all feel better, as you do. We were let down by this company, because we worked with them last year to make it happen, and it never happens. And now we feel, you know, if we have to work and give up a little time here to make it work, then we're, we'll do what we have to do.
And you'll already be out in the ocean.
Yeah.
That's good. That's good. Do they still have any other walls to do?
There's some minor repairs that have to be made, that's all. But the wall is basically done.
Wall on the left side of the slip?
Oh, the wall under the upper parking lot.
Oh, that's done?
Yeah.
No, the wall of the lower parking lot's done. We're talking about possibly also having them do the wall in the upper parking lot. So between the slip and the upper parking lot?
Well, as you go down the slip, the wall, that needs to be pointed up.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. They can get that done.
ASAP.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
And, and by the way, before you leave, we'll make the changes for these beach stickers for your sternman. I had no idea they were paying $25.
No, me neither.
No, 10 bucks a piece.
It's just like you, I mean, and I would suggest that you get with all the Lobsterman, and make a list of, you know, you, how many stickers you need for your, your stuff and your family, and then the sternman, who doesn't live in town, but he needs a sticker, so that we have his name and address. And there's probably gonna be some changes with that as we go forward, we're gonna discuss it tonight, okay? But I wanna make sure, I saw that $25, I said, wow, that's, that's kinda, that's kinda really-
One thing, Justin, on the, if you have a sternman and he doesn't work out, how would we handle that as, as far as a sticker?
Yeah.
Just take it back?
Yeah, you'd try, but sometimes when they don't work out, you might not see him again. You know, you know, just to be honest, but you hope for the best, I guess.
So it happens.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, okay. I was trying to figure that out.
Yeah.
You're right, they might not see him again.
Unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Have a nice night.
See you later.
Thank you very much for taking the time.
Good night.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Do you have all the motions, Jeff? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The Citizens Forum is, that was just about it. I, no one else here. County Ministers' Report, you're up, Jeff.
Great. The first item has to do with the FY 2018 budget. We had talked at the last meeting that there were some minor changes that have to be made. Basically, we had just hired a new treasure, Assistant Treasure Collector, and we needed to adjust a health package. We made that adjustment. We also found a omission in the fire department, so we made that adjustment. So with those, the budget is, as we've been discussing over the last three months, and it's ready for you to take action to approve, and you have a motion before you to do so.
Okay, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the FY 2018 balanced budget as presented, with a total operational cost of $9,51,370, and a total appropriation of
Second for discussion. Motion's been made, and motion's been seconded. Further discussion?
The part down the end, the Finance Committee will be taking their final budget votes by Friday.
Yeah, that's outdated, that they've taken their votes around.
Okay, the, first of all, they're an advisory and finance committee, and they have not, they're not gonna fund two positions? Those are our, that's our budget.
There are three variances that you're talking about between the selectmen and the Finance Advisory Committee budget. There are two positions that they've elected not to fund, and then also, they're not supporting the ambulance enterprise. So those are the three variances between the two.
Okay, well-
And we'll be talking about that in preparation for the town meeting.
When do we, we're gonna meet with them, correct?
Yes, I'm trying to set up a meeting. They're, they've just finished putting the book out, so they're kind of exhausted right now, so I'll try to-
I thought the budget belonged to the selectmen.
The, the first round does belong to the selectmen, and then it goes to the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee brings it forward to the town meeting.
But it's still our budget.
It is recommended by the Finance and Advisory Committee, the selectmen are the origin of the budget, but the Finance and Advisory Committee's the one who speaks to the town meeting and presents the book that goes out to the residents. So if the Board of Selectmen have a difference of opinion, it goes to the discussion on the floor at town meeting.
Well, DPW skilled laborer, I mean, that's a position that's an absolute must. I, I-
We only have five, five Public Works employees, and you could see what happened last night, they needed every one of them.
Well, I mean, okay, so this goes to the floor, because we are the elected, we are the ones who are elected, and they advise the town on how to spend our budget. I think.
Yeah.
But anyway, I just took exception to that.
I'm in favor of every of the changes, with the exception of the ambulance enterprise fund. I'm totally against that, because of, number one, I don't like the idea, first year out of the, we're raising the fee for the ambulants, and I just think that's wrong, and, and we don't have a chance to, we need to study that a little, a little deeper, okay? And I'd like to have that taken out of this, I, I, I go along with A and C, funding for both of the Assistant Treasure Collector and Public Works Employee. I mean, we, that position for the Assistant Treasure Collector is huge, and the, the Public Works, we've only got five full-time people down there, and, with the new superintendent, he's going through this very diligently, and he's looking for a specific individual with a multi-talent resume, and that's why it's taken him so long to get that position filled. So, and I, and I think he's doing the correct thing, and he's doing the right thing, taking his time, and not being rushed or pushed or anything into it. Well, I'm definitely, I think the board's definitely in favor of that position, and if we need to defend it on the town hall floor, we'll do that. Same with the Treasure Collector. As you all know, the town meeting is the jury, and we, we're gonna be defending it.
I'm ready.
But on the ambulance front, I just, I don't think it's, I think we need more study on that and look at it, and I, I really didn't like not having the full-time firefighters get involved in this thing, and move us money around, and, so I'd like to have that withdrawn. I'm gonna vote no on that, but I don't wanna vote no on the whole thing. I'd like to just isolate that, if I could. The motion's been made for the whole thing, but I'd like to make an amendment that we take out, and we'll see if it passes, I don't know, of the ambulance enterprise fund. I just think this, it makes sense to me, the whole-
I think, if I may, I think you should note that you're against it, but I think it should go as is.
Yeah, I think it's-
And, because they-
Well, this is the town hall, town meeting.
They are, if I may, this, they're indefinitely, they're gonna indefinitely postpone this anyway.
No, no, I understand that.
So then you can get up and speak on it.
Okay. I just wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna set you-
But you can go on record now as saying no.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna set you two up, you know what I mean? You guys are in favor, no, no, I'm town meeting, you know what I mean? I wanna, just wanna tell you. Okay, that's fine.
I knew that, I-
Okay, what else?
The, well, first, I, I'm, you know, all for the Assistant Treasure Collector. I got a long letter from Kathy Famulari before she left. I asked for, I did my homework, and I asked for what to describe the two jobs, and she did a great job doing that. And from what I can see already, they hired a crackerjack, this girl is really, really good, and she's just gonna, you know, and she's young, that's, that's the good part about it, so she can fold into the next step later on, when the other one, when Kathy Coosworth retires, so, at some point. So, you know, this is what we, we look for. And as far as the DPW, you know, look, they have a laborious job, and, and they, they need as much help as they can. I mean, there was a time when we had 20 guys down there, and now we have five. So, and it's to the town's benefit, because if you keep sending things out to be repaired or whatever, it costs the town money. So if you have these skilled guys there that can do it, it saves, undoubtedly saves the town money, I think, so. But, and I noticed here, the fire captain's funding. I wanna congratulate Dean Palumbo for, he took the captain's exam and passed, so we'll, I'd like, I'd make the motion that we put him back at fire captain.
Second.
If, if we could, we're waiting for the formal notification of the test, and that'll be placed on the next meeting on the 20th. We hope to receive it within the next week. So once we have that, then at least we'll have the documentation.
Okay, well, I want him, I want him put back at fire captain as soon as that comes in.
It will be back retroactive when he passed?
Yeah, once, once we receive notification, it'll be upon that notification.
I think he's got 17 days, it takes 17 days for him, 'cause he got the email saying that he, he actually did very good on it, and then it takes 17 days for them to actually send the stuff out. So, I, I want-
But I, we, we, while we're on the subject, we've gotta make sure that he was a fire captain. And all that time in grade has to be added to his service, you know what I mean? His longevity goes.
Right.
It all has to be added then.
Oh, yeah. 'Cause he was, and he was the acting captain, and he took a backseat until he figured out that, you know, until he took the test, and he took it and he passed, so.
Okay, I, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Okay, motion's been made, any further discussion?
Well, I think we made two motions at once.
Yes. No, I know, I know we did.
First one, then we'll make the next one.
Why don't we do the first one?
With your amendment.
With, with, right.
Your amendment of a no on ambulance.
I will amend on the ambulance, right.
Yeah, 'cause that should be in the minutes, we tried.
Right, yeah. Motion has been made, is seconded?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I approve, okay? I'd like to make a motion that, I'd like to, for the record, I'm not in favor of putting the ambulance enterprise fund in the budget, okay? I wanna make that.
Yeah.
Let that be known.
It may be in the minutes.
And I will be, and I will be talking against that in town hall floor.
Duly noted.
Makes the minutes.
Yeah, duly noted.
That's all, okay, we don't need a vote.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to also commend the Board of Selectmen for really participating heavily in the budget process this round. It was, we had some challenges before us in the 2018 budget, and it was very helpful to have the selectmen so integrated into the process, so congratulations and thank you. The next item is the, I'm gonna pull the first, the second and third item together, which is the annual town meeting warrant, and then Article III transfers. So we have a completed and posted or signed warrant, and there are 41 articles. At the next meeting, which is the 20th, we will have the moderator here, and we will start that meeting with the moderator meeting. And the moderator just walks us through kind of the dry run for the town meeting, and it's great that it's televised, 'cause I think it helps people to understand the process if they're not familiar with it. But again, they'll- But again, there are forty-one articles. One of the articles is Article Three, which is the transfer. And so I will be getting you information as early next week on just the motions, Article Three, what that entails right now, and then also an executive summary that is a checklist that we go through to, and we use that for the town meeting day. So we're where we should be. The annual report and the Finance Committee book are out to print, and so we're on schedule, and we're heading towards April twenty-ninth.
Beautiful.
Yes, which is very good.
If I may?
Sure.
The Article Ten is on the Coast Guard housing, the sale of the property where the Selectmen are going to request the town to allow us to begin the process of selling Coast Guard houses. Begin the process is the key for me. Uh, we need all the people in town to come up to support us on selling these as individual units. Thank you.
Great. Uh, then looking at the next item, which is the beach sticker discussion. We started this discussion, and I actually think it's great that we called everything...
Wait, wait, let's vote on the one, and then the transfer.
You're all set. There's, there's nothing before you to take a vote on.
It's already done.
Yeah.
Okay, we, we, okay, I thought we had approved it, okay.
So on the hunt beach sticker process, you would ask a few questions. It forced me to really call out all the details, and I think that helps all of us, because, uh,
Yes.
In dealing with City Hall, um, uh, systems, they've made some suggestions on what we can do to improve the system towards what you were asking for. But in there's also, in this discussion, there's a lot of policy direction that I'd ask for you to kind of talk through right now. But when looking at City Hall systems, what they made is two direct, uh, two recommendations, and it's on page two, top page. It says, immediately what they can do is they can require that anybody who submits an application be on an excise list as well as have, having finished a census. And then next year, what they would suggest is that, because we're halfway through the process of the initial issuances of stickers, is that next year we attach the plate number for each car on the sticker. That requires that the sticker on the car actually be matched with the plate, and that helps to make sure that the stickers don't get passed around, and it's more enforceable that way. So those are the two recommendations they make.
Well, right now, they, right now, we, that's what we do. We, you know, immediately, all future applications for beach stickers can be required to both, both be on, shown on the excise list and the register, and the completed census. They, they do that anyway.
But that's not our formal policy, so what we're doing is I'm, I'm asking you to kind of set the formal policy.
Well, I think we did that, I think we, we did that, because I know that Peggy has mentioned to me that she has to give them input on the census. Definitely, and I think each sticker must be affixed to the window. I mean, I don't know how that got out of control, where people can, you know, just laminate it and put it on their dashboard. That's gotta start, uh, because they're selling them. Now, there's one other thing here that really kinda, uh, I was, I was looking at. Now, if somebody loses their sticker, they can turn around and get a new one. If they don't show that they had a sticker before, if they don't turn the old one back in, for instance, if they broke a windshield, you peel it off and you can send it back. They'll give you another one for free, I think. But if, if you don't send them back anything and just say it's missing, they charge you twenty-five dollars. Well, some of these stickers are being sold on Craigslist for two-hundred bucks, so that's a hundred and seventy-five dollar profit. Uh, you know, they have to be, I, I want them stuck to the windshield, no excuses, and they have to have a registration number on them, absolutely, for next year. I think the other thing, the, I'd like to know what the police's policy is too. How do they give them out? And what do they give out? Um, I don't see anything here from the Police Department. I just see, this is from City Hall Systems and actually the Treasurer Collector's office.
And in the Police Department, in talking to Bob Dwyer, what they give out is a pass that is dated for that day, and it's good for only that period of time. Uh, I can get a little more detail if you'd like.
Okay, those are the big, big stickers?
Yes.
'Cause I actually have a copy of one at home, and there's no date on it.
I'm not, not sure. I know that Bob said that they put the date on it, so it's only good for that period.
Okay.
Yeah, they're dated and they're color-coded too.
Yep.
Well, they're color-coded, um...
For that day.
Yep.
Uh, for that day?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's pink, it's for Monday.
Okay.
They, they go right through it, and it's only, you know, it's, I, I, the procedure is, they have to go through, you know, request it.
So I think we need to get that out there, that we have, the sticker should be affixed to the windshield, um, stuck on there.
Yeah, I know.
Now, some people just leave them on the dashboard. They'll tape them to the window, uh...
Okay, we have to put instructions there.
Yeah, okay. And if you go to the lower portion of the second page, there's a policy direction request. Um, as you'll see there, there's a whole host of questions that, uh, we raised, that if you have some policy direction on these, that'd be great. Like, for instance, right now, residents can receive up to five stickers. And it just depends upon the number of cars you have on the excess list, I mean, the, the excise list, excuse me. Um, and then we have policies on organizations. Um, we don't have much policy on enforcement. So I don't know if that's something you wanna think about or talk about right now.
Businesses resident-owned receive as many stickers as they have registered vehicles. I, I don't think that's advisable. I mean, if I, if I have a repair plate and I have fifteen cars I wanna sell, that would entitle me to fifteen stickers. And I would never do that, but I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, they don't need that, they don't need that many stickers. I think we need to, we need to do something with that.
Do you have a suggestion on how to find that lower number?
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Well, number one, I, I was going through this, and we had lobstermen here, and I, I see the lobsterman, the, um, lobsterman waff only. I mean, they, most of them are residents. They, they have a sticker, they should be able to park anywhere in the town, number one. They're charging twenty-five dollars for a lobsterman waff only. I don't, that's very unfair.
Well, that's, that's the non-resident ones.
Uh, no, it says here, resident's stickers, ten dollars, limit five stickers per house, so I, I would, I would, I would take the limit five. I would take that out completely, make it according to, you know, the excise and, and the census.
Well, that's, that's what they do, so if somebody has five vehicles on the excise list, they can get up to five stickers.
Some of them have ten vehicles.
Yeah.
Ten vehicles. How do they get ten vehicles?
There are some, um...
Supposed to park ten vehicles. Unless it's at Bass Point Apartments.
I, I...
I, I just, I, I, I think you need a, we get a policy that you get a beach, a beach sticker if you live in the hunt, you pay real estate taxes, you own a house, you and your wife, you get two stickers. That's it.
That, that's, that's, that's plenty.
Now, the exceptions to the rule would be, you know, sternmen and the lobstermen. And I wouldn't charge them twenty-five dollars for waff only. I just think they should be, you know, I mean... And then the lobstermen themselves are paying twenty-five dollars. I don't know where that started.
The lobstermen paying twenty-five dollars?
No, that, that's non-residents.
Non-resident lobstermen.
Yeah, yeah, and it doesn't say that in there, but that's, that's what that's for. So anybody who's a resident?
Tom Conrad issued beach parkers stickers to residents, organizations, other special circles. All stickers issued based upon the list of individual businesses paying taxes in that. It's nothing about resident and non-resident.
So you have resident above it, and then you have plackets for lobstermen, uh, yeah, to, to clarify, it really means...
Well, it is, you need, you need to spell that out. I, I just don't think lobstermen waff only. Lobstermen, if they live in town, they own property, they get stickers.
Right, correct.
And then they should submit a list to you, Jeff, of the sternmen for ten dollars, not twenty-five dollars. I mean, that's, that's...
But, but Jeff, what Jeff was saying was that the, some of the lobstermen may be out-of-towners.
Yes.
So you'd want them to get a twenty-five dollar placate.
Oh, no, they'd get a, they'd get a, well, you could give them a placate waff only, charge them ten dollars.
Okay, that's what we, that's what we do, but it's just twenty, it's twenty-five. We should just charge them ten, yeah.
It shouldn't be, I mean, they're not making that kind of money there.
I, I don't think we should, and, and, fine.
The other thing, I, I, I'm, I'm totally against, um, people coming up here, like the elderly. A lot of them don't have computers.
Right.
And they should be able to walk in here and show them their registration, and they're on the census, and they're on the excise tax. They should be able to get a sticker right out of the Treasurer's office. A lot of people come up and don't have computers. And, and then instead of people having them fill out forms, and then they mail, they have to mail the form in, and then... I totally disagree with that. I, I, I disagree when we first started this process. You should be able to, you know, anyone, I'm gonna say a number, seventy years or older, should be able to come up and get a sticker out of the Treasurer's office. I mean, that's why, it's like double taxation. We're, we're paying for stickers that they're paying taxes for. I mean, I know you, you know, you, we issued twenty-six hundred stickers. Well, there's thirteen hundred homes, and two cars per home is twenty-six hundred. Now, I, I understand some of the grandmothers and elderly, they don't go to the beach, and their daughters living up in, outside of town, they would get the sticker, and probably that's what you're seeing. And the other problem, in order to implement this program, to put the license plate on the sticker, they've already started selling the stickers, right?
We can't do it this year.
Yeah.
I wouldn't do it this year.
No, no, exactly.
But I would give us time to make up one, a sample, you know, so we can do that, or they can do that. Somebody, and then I, uh...
Well, this company, City Hall Systems, can just...
Yeah, but they're gonna charge more?
No, all they have to do is write the registration number on it. Like, they, they do it in the North End, they do it in all these different communities.
Right into the system, and the system then puts it, and prints it on.
Prints out the stickers.
Yeah, with the registration number on it. I, I mean, I think it's just, look, this, I, I see it, and I can tell you, and, and I understand it gets hot, and, you know, Bobby has told me that, you know, it, you know, it's only a, a few weeks out of the year it happens, but if you go down Spring Road, I was, I was appalled last year when I went, when I was coming home, both sides of the street, and I don't know how the neighbor, I don't know how they put up with it, with line right through, right in front of my garage. They just, they parked right in front of my garage, so you, I couldn't get a car in there.
Why don't we, why don't we...
And they, and you couldn't get the ambulance or a fire truck down there.
Why don't we have resident parking only with sticker on one side of that road?
Well, I, you know, again, we've done that, we...
I don't know.
The, the rule was, three hundred feet from the, uh, what's the rule, three hundred feet from the, uh, the beach?
Well, Mike Manning made a rule that, um...
Had been within three hundred feet of the beach.
I forget what it was. I remember the motion made. He, he made it. It was, um, three hundred yards.
Three hundred yards, okay.
Three hundred yards from the beach.
Right.
You couldn't park.
It's just, and it's out of control. I mean, if you get on, Short Beach is a beautiful place. I grew up on that beach, and it's, it's, it's out of control.
If we have twenty-six hundred people show up, you know, at Short Beach, we, how many parking spaces are down at Short Beach? We should figure that out.
Right.
And how many spaces up at East Point? It's what, ten, twelve?
But we've never, we've never had a, we had problems years ago, I mean, not, not like this. This is, and we always had thirteen hundred houses in the hut. I mean, give or take a couple, but you...
You've got apartments in there, you know, thirteen hundred homes.
Right.
And some homes, you and I both know, the single family, and there's three families living in there. There, there's two apartments. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I mean, look a little in the hut. We've got problems just parking out there alone, and, and on, on, on Wilson Road. I mean, it's just, it's, it's a very difficult, and we put the police right in the middle of this whole thing, you know? They, they're throwing in this, and, um, I, I, I don't know. I, I think we need to control it better. And, uh, and I'm, you know, listen, I'm, uh, I'm guilty, you know, being on the board the longest. You know, people come and they, you know, it's like, um, I won't use it, but people send us help. And then they ask, you know, somebody asks for a beach sticker, you know? And we should make a list of the people that help us, that, you know, they could still pay, but this would be a supplemental list. Do you understand? I mean, we've given, uh, people that assist the town in many ways. I, I don't know what you're gonna do with that, but there's a lot, I just...
That, that is further discussion. I agree with that, because...
Yeah, I just think so.
You help me, I help you.
Well, we, 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 they, they sent the...
But...
They sent us prisoners, for instance, you know, twenty-five, thirty prisoners. They, they clean the cemetery, they clean the beaches, you know what I'm saying? I mean... And for sticker, I mean, I, you know, it doesn't make sense not to, you know, to shut that thing off, but I'm, but I, I'm just saying...
That's one of two stickers, but it's, you know, and a Senator and Representative have gotten them.
Well, there used to be the, I won't mention the names of the area, but there was a lot of, a lot of it going on, absolutely, the old days. Absolutely. I mean, we had so many stickers being passed out, it was, you know, it was, you know, but I mean...
It's become out of control.
It's now, it's the senior citizens, it's not all the senior citizens, but their daughters coming in from out of the city of town, and, um... We need to be careful with this thing, though, because, you know, we, we gotta tighten it up, there's no question. And, uh, I just have, I, I just see the senior citizens being suffered again for, they don't have a computer. Their daughter has to write, type it all in, and it's, it's difficult. It's difficult, you know, and they're getting, what, three-fifty a sticker? Three-fifty a sticker, whoa.
There, there's a lot of policy discussion here. Could I work with each of you to try to put together a list of your...
No, I'd rather have the discussion with the three or four of them.
But what I can do is come back with that list to say that this was your input, and then at least we'd have something to work off of. Right now, there's just a lot of policy here.
Well, you can't, I'm not, the stickers are already started being sold out, right?
Yep.
I just, for some reason, I, I, I'd like to stop the procedure for people over seventy, force them, they, you know, to fill out a form to get a sticker.
Well, I know that the Treasurer Collector's office does assist them in, in getting their stickers.
Yeah.
And, and so that, that is very much helpful in that respect.
Well, can you use credit cards?
Yeah, you can use credit cards.
Can we use a ten-dollar credit card?
They can use a credit card up here for anything they want. They can pay their taxes with it.
No, I know, I, I'm just, I wasn't sure on the stickers, the ten dollars.
But what I could do...
I thought it was most of them, some of the fees, the twenty-five dollar minimum, things like that.
What I could do is actually do another column of these and just put your inputs in it, so that at least when you're talking at the next meeting, you can give me more specific direction.
Sure.
'Cause this could be a two-hour discussion.
Right.
I think it's the police chief involved.
Right, I think we need to see his policy.
Have him, have him sit in with us too, and tell him his problems, okay? His office is writing these tickets, parking tickets, all right? And then tell me the problems he's having. Have him review this and say, what would you suggest, you know what I mean?
Yep, no, I'll, I'll schedule that for the twentieth.
I personally think this is wonderful, because we're showing the town that we can discuss things before we make decisions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well...
Well, I didn't know about the lobstermen.
See, I didn't know either.
I, I had no idea they were paying twenty-five dollars.
I did question it because my next-door neighbor's a lobsterman.
Oh, okay, I...
And I went, and then I forgot about it.
When I saw this, I said, oh.
I think, I think I just, under, under the Police Department issued day passes, there should be, yeah, absolutely, we should change, change, change that to a limit of how many day passes they can give out. A day, okay? 'Cause I think that they should be able to, but, you know, we can do that. So this...
Well, we gotta figure out how many parking spaces are at lowlands.
Right.
On a hot ninety-degree, how soon does it get filled, right? And then what do we, well, soon... And we know the areas where people come over and illegally park, Town Hall, Library, Public Works.
Public Works.
Public Works Building.
Yeah.
They're using the soccer field without permission, things like, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, I know that.
And then we just, we, we need to get that squared away. And they know the areas. The police know, and they...
Right.
He's done a great job, the police chief. I gotta get him, Carlos, on the parking up at East Point and the WAF. He leaves a cruiser floating up there, and it's, it's fantastic. It's worked. I, I, usually I get complaints from up there, you know, a lot of them. But I think we need to re-study this, review it, keep moving, okay?
So also have, have Bob join us at the next meeting as well.
Yeah, or anybody else, have Kathy Koojus too.
That's a great idea.
Kathy Koojus is, sit down. She's the parking clerk. Is she the parking clerk?
She is.
Uh, then have her and then have her office think, you know, I mean, um, and how much time do they spend on this? I mean, we're gonna take that position away, or they're gonna try to take it away. I mean, what happens? You know what I'm saying?
It's not, you know, we'll, we'll defend it. Um, the other thing is, um, I wasn't on the board when they decided to go to City Hall Systems, and I, quite frankly, I was against it, um, you know, just being a citizen. But I see what they go through, and I know how much work they have to do... they go through and I know how much work they have to do to get to that point, to they get, so they can issue the sticker. And I know it's frustrating for them because you have a lot of people coming in, they wanna pay bills, they wanna get a beach sticker, and it's not a very big office, so I, I think this has worked out pretty good, this, this whole City Hall system, I really do.
Is ten dollars too much? We make it five.
Well, then we lose money. We don't lose money, but...
We get it, we gain a dollar fifty a ticket.
So, if we...
Ten dollars, I mean, why...
City Hall gets three fifty, so...
Yeah, I mean, why, you know, I mean, why are we double taxing the people? The tax bills, you know, are large enough and own, and now, you know, they're charging ten, I don't know where the ten dollars came from.
Oh, from us?
Yeah. No, I understand, but I know where it came from. But I'm saying, why do we have ten dollars? It should be, you know...
Six fifty goes to the town.
There's another discussion we could have, you know, you pay an excise tax and your, the census is in there, they have a box, census, homeowner, and we mail them a sticker.
Yeah, we could do it that way, too.
You know what I mean? So that, that we know definitely the people that issue the stickers own property, okay? The ones that are gonna have problems is company cars, that the plate could be registered in New Jersey, company cars, you could have renters, people renting their property and they're finding exactly where, where the illegal apartments are, we can make a separate list of that.
Yeah.
So there's a separate list, so we, you know...
Well, we can talk about that, that, those are the stickers that we'd probably have to issue up here, if, if they're renters, if they have out-of-state plates and they're, they're citizens here.
Well, there's a lot, there's a whole school...
But we need to get through it and, and we need to, we need to take it, take care of it.
Yeah, so I'll have Bob and Kathy join us at the next meeting, and then in between, I'll send you kind of a simplified form that you can kind of check out with your preferences, and I'll pull it together.
I, I, current policy, residents and full-time renters pay excise tax eligible.
Yep.
I, I, I mean, Enzo told me, I was, he said, people don't have to live here and they can register a car in there. I never knew that.
If I live in Lynn, you're my brother, I can register my car in your house.
That's why they have to own property.
And that's the census issue, so...
And that's why the town clerk had fought for that for a couple of years.
To be fair to the taxpayer.
Yep.
Okay.
And so I'm assuming that you're, you're going to vote tonight that the first step is that there be excise and census.
Yes.
Because that, that would be nice to formalize that.
Well, let's not, let's put it all together, I don't want to just vote half.
Also, well, I think they do that now anyway, I know that City Hall Systems won't give you a sticker if you don't fill out your census.
Well, they, they do it, but it's never been voted, so it's, it's kind of, it's not the policy, I guess I'm saying.
Right, well, they would have to kick in next time. We can make that policy tonight, that particular one.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that it's, it's approve the, that the census's town residency would be part of the sticker process for this year.
The process for this year to have, to apply for a sticker is to be a town resident, own land.
Yep.
And excise tax and census.
Right, or rent.
The census takes it.
Or rental, with a note from the landlord.
Right.
And they should, the renters should be put on a separate list, have a different list so you can track these things, you know what I mean?
Let me make that suggestion to Kathy and have her speak to that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, great, vote on that?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Second, you second it, T?
Second for discussion.
Motion's been seconded for discussion.
I just think we're kind of, in the stream of 2017, we can't change it for 2017.
Some of it we can, but the majority of it we can't.
Majority of it we can't, because some people already have this.
Yeah.
But, but I agree, we do this moving forward.
I mean...
But one more thing, if I may...
They're listening tonight, they'll probably be, they'll be, they'll be up here tomorrow morning and next week before we meet.
On the funding distribution, I would assume that we can set that.
Yeah, and you have.
And we, oh, and we have, that's what my question, okay.
The only thing that you, that we, we agreed to that we didn't really set was three fifty, but when we signed the contract, we agreed to the three fifty, so that drove everything else.
And what goes, what goes to whom?
Yeah, exactly.
That happened when you guys first took them on, but I was like...
Yeah, it was just before I got here that you didn't take that vote. Thank you, the next item is the golf course capital...
Motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, sing a by saying aye.
Aye.
Next.
Golf course capital consideration, the MOU, we've talked about this, it's been bounced back and forth between council, and he's, has before us an MOU, memorandum of understanding between us and Play It As It Lies, and it speaks to specifically exactly what we had agreed to, so I'd just like you to vote to sign this.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the memo of the understanding between the Town of Nahat and Play It As It Lies Inc. of Charleston, Mass. as cap, a capital funding supplement to the related lease and management agreement dated September twenty-second, two thousand sixteen. Second.
Second discussion.
I think it's, what they've done, first of all, what they've done down there is incredible, and they're doing a good job, it's gonna be a beautiful restaurant, and, and it's gonna be just, golf course, I don't play golf yet, but I think it's, they're gonna do a great job, and the way they've done this is they've gone, it's, we've done it over ten years, so it, it breaks it down and it gives them, you know, gives them a little leeway over ten years, because they put a ton of money into the place, so I think it's a good deal, I think it's a good deal for the town. As I said earlier, the, we saw a great asset, so this is a fairly, this is a fair deal, and I support it.
I'm in favor of this, I'm just thinking, just to short-term, now that we've had a major sewer break down there, they're not gonna open up, I mean, they're not gonna open up in the month of April.
When we were meeting on site, they talked about, they moved it from the fifteenth to the latter part of April, so I think it's a, it's kind of a moving target at this point.
But I mean, should we charge them since they're not even open? I mean, this is like, say we say, May first, for the month of May, from January, February, March, and April, we shouldn't charge them rent, because they're not open and they're not making any money, and I'm thinking, you know, and then with the sewer break and the sewage, not, just, with just water, I should be, correct my, it wasn't sewage, it was water. But the onus is on us, we fixed it, and now it's, that delayed them, I'm just thinking, you know, we forgave January already, correct? So you look at it, February, March, April, three more months, and they're not gonna, I, I, I'm just looking at it as a business, I'm looking at this side of it.
Have they, how long is this gonna delay them? What happened?
I've heard of no delays at this point.
So they...
Because it was, it was about an inch deep and it was there for a shorter period of time, and so they're, they're not gonna have much disturbance, but what we had agreed to is ninety-five thousand dollars worth of revenue to the town is the fixed amount.
Right.
So if you wanted to do something like that, we could juggle the ten-year period to adjust the whole call.
That's what I'm saying, I, I'd put this vote off tonight and add in April, I mean, we'll add in those February, March, April, three months.
Oh, I, I don't think we can do that.
Why, you know, if they're not open, and they're not open and they're not, I mean...
I know that, but we...
And then, we've had a sewer break, I mean, I...
I know.
I'm not gonna use it as an excuse, but I think we should be fair to them.
Well, I think we are, I mean, at this, but at this point...
Yeah, but I mean...
At this point, we, we've gave them a month, we've waived them a month.
You're dealing with their money, you know what I'm saying?
I know that, I, I understand that, but...
The contract, we, we never expected a hundred and twenty-five, we expected ninety, eighty-five, and so they're out there for an extra thirty thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand, am I right, Joe?
Yeah, about ten thousand dollars.
So I'm just thinking, I mean, they're doing, they're doing right by us, that building has never been, in forty-five years, has ever been touched by all the people that have leased that building. I mean, there's no fire, no new fire alarm system, insulation, handicap bathroom, the unit's been cleaned up, it's, I mean, the whole, all brand-new equipment, I mean, they're really, they're really going above and beyond, I'm just, I'm just thinking, as a businessman, you know, thinking about this and say, why don't we give them a break? Since they're not opening and they're not bringing in revenue, I mean, you know, and the month of April is very iffy, we continue to get rain and water and cold, you know, because next week is gonna be eighty, then it'll probably go, be snowing, we'll have a snowstorm down there. I think we need to rethink this, 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 this amendment, this amendment, I just think, yeah, I, I just, I, I'm not trying to, but I'm just trying to think, you know, we're not, we should bend over backwards for them, because they're doing us the favor, they've got a building down there that's, no matter whatever happens, all these improvements have made it better, and it, and it's more, it's more saleable for new people down the road, I'm just, you know...
My primary concern is just maintaining the minimum revenues that we had discussed.
Right, I understand.
I think those are very fair to the town.
It's part of, it's part of the budget, and this, we balance our budget with this, so we gotta be careful with that, and I, I understand their predicament, but they also took on, you know, I mean, they, they knew what they were gonna do, they, they could have, you know...
Yeah, but they did the right thing, they, they could have walked right in there without doing anything.
Right. Well, they could have made some renovations.
They brought in, they brought in a good contractor, they did, you know, their building is, it's, we've seen it.
It's nice, yeah, they did a nice job down there, so I'm, and I'm pleased with it.
They did a good job, I, I just think we should reward them instead of punishing them.
Well, we are.
No, 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 but that's, that...
But my opinion is that this is a good deal, and if anything, we can address this down the road. I, I'm concerned about this year.
Right.
There is a clause in there that states that the Board of Selectmen, at their sole discretion, can modify this, but that it's understood that this is, right now, the maximum.
I, I honestly think that we see how they do for the, the whole season, and we address this next year at budget time. I'm not making a motion, I just think it's something we should do, because remembering what, what Mr. Lombard said about the three months, but let's see how well they do.
But I just, there's, there's no revenue coming in down there, you know, and, you know what I mean, that's my, my, my biggest fear.
We, we just sent the balanced budget to the FinCon.
Based on this.
Based on, based on this, and if we, if we pull it out now, we're gonna be in trouble, so I think we need to go with what we have right now and then look at it down the road.
That budget is balanced, but the FinCon's gotta try to chop it up a little more.
That's right.
Yeah, so, you know, and they've already started it, I mean, they're not funding those two positions.
Well...
So, I mean, do they run a personnel...
We'll see.
Did they, did they have a personnel survey and a job usage of these two positions in, in the office? What's the workload in the, in the treasurer's office and the workload of the public, I didn't see any assessment like that, has that been done?
No.
No personnel assessment or anything like that, did they, because you have one already to present at town meeting.
Yep.
Good, all right, all right, okay, motion's been made, seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, sing a by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen, we have a series of use requests, and the first one starts out with the Apollo Club, and you have a motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Nahat Public Library's event request for an Apollo Club concert on six nineteen seventeen at three thirty PM at Town Hall.
Motion's been made, seconded.
I will second that.
Discussion. All those in favor, sing a by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is a kite day.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Coolidge Middle Schools event request for an annual kite day on Friday, six two seventeen from noon to one forty-five PM on Short Beach.
Second. Motion made, seconded, discussion. Do they get, I don't know, seventy, what are these kids coming in, four school buses?
Yeah, but...
Have we, have we got coverage?
We do.
Okay, we've done this before?
We've done this before.
Okay.
All those in favor, sing a by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries.
I'm gonna call the next one out a little differently because, or a little more, because it's, it's unique, we have a tall ship event coming in June sixteenth, the event is in Boston, and it goes from the sixteenth to the twenty-third, the ships come in to the harbor on the sixteenth and they leave on the twenty-third. What is being planned is that one of the ships will stop here at the, in Tudor Harbor area, and then they're proposing a party where they bring in the, the admiral and the sailors, and they have a party on the wharf itself, and so that's the proposal, and you have a motion on that.
Okay, we've, we've done this before, they did it the last time here, so, oh, I'm sorry, T, go ahead.
They're requesting a fee waiver?
They are requesting a fee waiver.
Do we vote on them, get a waiver?
A fee waiver? You, it would be best if you could, just make it part of your motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Nahat Preservation Trust and Dury Club's event request for the Tall Ships Party on six sixteen seventeen at three PM to ten PM at Town Hall at the Town WAF, fee waived.
Motion's been made, seconded.
I'll second for discussion.
Discussion.
Sounds great.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, there's no invitation for the board?
There will be, you're actually speaking.
We'll dress up sailors.
I told you we should have get new harbor masses boat with the lights and we can go out there and...
Yeah.
Motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor, sing a by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, this next one is my favorite, Curious Creatures, if you haven't come to this event, it's a fantastic event, so, and you have a motion on this.
Okay, I'll move that the, that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Nahat Public Library's event request for Curious Creatures on four nineteen seventeen at ten AM at the Nahat Town Hall.
Second.
Second, discussion.
Make sure they don't leave any snakes on the Town Hall.
It's the hedgehogs you have to watch out for.
Motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor, sing a by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, your name?
Next, each year we have the Earl One Pitch Tournament, and that's the next motion.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Friends of Earl Annual Softball Tournament on seven eighteen seventeen from nine AM to five PM at the Flash Road Ball Field, that is to benefit the Hanson Field.
Motion's been made, seconded.
I will second that. Discussion.
Have you given...
Just says, Dear Mr. Lombard and fellow selectmen, so it should say, Mr. Brolin, Mr. Taylor also.
Well, I didn't, I didn't write that.
I know you didn't, but that shows how important you are.
Yeah, no, I am not that important, I, I wanna make sure...
It's a great event.
Oh, absolutely.
Great event.
We wanna make sure we give them authorization to use that ballpark.
They're great people.
And also, they're gonna have music, and they're gonna have music, and they're gonna be able to sell...
And from our house, we're located exactly right, Mr. Lombard, we can dance to the music.
Oh, absolutely, they got great-
No pain for it.
They got great music down there. Uh, One Pitch and, um-
This is terrific.
And they have the food.
Congrats.
So, we give them a permit for all that.
Yeah.
Motion's been made, is second, all those in favor, sing a by saying aye.
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 Motion carries?
The last item is we have a one-day, a series of one-day liquor licenses for the Nahant Vet, uh, Association. We have a motion on that.
Okay, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Nahant Veterans Association one-day all liquor, all alcoholic liquor licenses for the following events and dates. Uh, the Legion District Meeting on four twenty-three seventeen from one to six P.M., the Kentucky Derby in five sixteen, five-six seventeen from three to eight P.M., and Memorial Day on, uh, five twenty-nine seventeen from twelve to five P.M., and a flag retirement ceremony on six sixteen seventeen from five to nine P.M. All events to be held at the Nahant Life Saving Station.
Motion's been made, is second?
Second it?
Discussion. All those in favor, sing a by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Um, the next item has to do with, uh, trash collection. Uh, about a month and a half, two months ago, the Selectmen had asked me to speak with, um, Waste Management, our trash collector, about concerns that you were having, and a lot of it had to do with, um, kind of untidiness with the barrels and such, and damage of the barrels and such. So, in speaking with, uh, Mike Wall, the representative, he suggests that we consider splitting the town into two days, Thursday and Friday, uh, and you have a map in here that would show how that would split, and the split would be on Spring Road. And what this would do is two things. It would give them more time to be more cautious and, and careful, and then also, if they missed something on Thursday, they'd be there Friday and they could pick it up on Friday. So, um, if, if you are agreeable to this, I just need a kind of sense of the board, and then I can bring details back to you at the next meeting.
Well, I think it's a good idea because it, so that they don't rush, and I, I think most people would agree that two days wouldn't be bad. Sure, I agree. They, they, since it's been brought up, I think Mr. Burrell started bringing it up, that, that they've done a great job on my street since then, but having two days to take the trash is a good idea. I concur.
Yeah, they're not rushing as much, I think, they, and they can put two or three trucks per unit, you know, per-
Right. Okay.
And so, with this, just so the public understands, um, Little Nahant to Spring Road, uh, Bailey's Hill area, um, that would be Thursday, and then Big Nahant from Spring Road to East Point would be Friday, i- in this proposal. So, let me go work out the details, and I'll come back to you on the twentieth with more details that you can take a vote on.
You'll switch them over to life first?
Uh, they'll look at a transition, uh, they wanna make sure that they get enough P.R. out there so that people are comfortable. So, I'll ask them to roll out, uh, a timeline for us. And then, when it's appropriate, we'll put a map on the webpage so people can understand.
Okay.
Good.
Very good.
Good idea, thank you.
Great. And then, uh, we also had an update from the health agent on two violations that were ongoing, and as you can see, he's pursuing them, uh, with no further violations being